Well, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our May 21st. No, it is not May 21st. Sorry about that. June 16th, 2020 work session, and we're here today to talk about our capital improvements plan. And let me begin by turning this meeting over to our superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is that time of year for our work session on both our operating and our capital budget, a large part of which is your CIP. I will turn the meeting over to your CFO Dale Kelly, who will introduce and then share some of the time with his staff. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening or afternoon. For our agenda today, we're going to look first at the operating budget. We'll take a look at the estimated revenues appropriations, and then take a look a little at the future issues. And then we'll move on to the capital budget. Again, look at the revenues estimated and your appropriations and future issues. And then lastly, we'll do next steps. Tonight with me, I have some of my staff. Doreen Concolino, Senior Director Budget, she's going to start us out going over the operating budget. And then Judith Padres, Director Budget, she will come back and do the capital budget, and I'll sum us up with the next steps. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Doreen.
Good afternoon. The operating budget. Over the last six months, board members have been provided a detailed review of the district's operating budget by participating in budget project work sessions. The superintendent afforded board members and the community an opportunity for a line-by-line review of the district budget. The in-depth examination of the operating budget provided transparency into the Florida Education Finance Program, school allocations and appropriations with an exercise as principal to complete a school site-based budget. You were presented how our strategic plan aligns to the budget and reminded that school appropriations, including charter schools, represent 1.39 billion of the $1.9 billion operating budget. The academic return on investment provided specific areas where budget savings could be achieved and identified successful programs that should be maintained. Chiefs presented an overview of each division with a department-by-department budget review that included a summary of responsibilities, department discretionary budgets, and the number of positions supported. Finally, there was a detailed review of system-wide and district-wide funding. The results of the budget project sessions will be useful as we complete the development of the FY '21 budget. Here is the actual FTE for past years along with the projection for next year. Our current projection for FY '21 is 209,400 FTE, an increase of 1,661 FTE over the fourth calculation of 207,739. You can see in the graph that our growth moderated in the current year with an increase of just 1,046 full-time equivalent students. Given the pandemic, we do not know what the impact will be on our projection for this next year. This forecast incorporates all K-12 students, including charter school, McKay, and family empowerment scholarship students. However, this does not include VPK. Our overall funding increase from the state FEFP in total dollars amounts to 60 million or 3.81%. However, 37.4 million is for the teacher salary increase, and 13 million will be used to pay for the growth in students.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Let me remind the speakers, because we have three on the line. Would you mention the slide number? Every time you turn the page, mention the slide number.
And Dr. Jenkins, let me take this moment just to make sure that the public knows that in addition to the board members that are here, we do have board members participating remotely. If I could do a quick roll call? Let me start with Member Gallo.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Thank you. Member Lopez.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Member Cobert.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Member Gould, Vice Chair Gould, are you on the line with us?
I am. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Dr. Gordon.
Present, Madam Chair.
Wonderful, thank you. Dr. Castredennel.
Hello, Madam Chair.
Hello. And Member Bird.
Hello, Chair.
Hello. Thank you. All right. And of course, I'm here present. So we are all present at this meeting, one way or the other, and I apologize for the interruption. Let's go back to you.
Certainly. And now we're on Slide 6. Here are our property tax values since 2000. These dollars help fund both the operating and capital budgets for the coming school year. Last year, we had an 8.8% increase in taxable values. This year, our taxable value should increase by 6.9% based upon the estimated tax role calculated by the Office of Economic and Demographic Research. The current projection, as you can see, is fairly steady growth of around 5% to 6% per year over the next five years. Unfortunately, the state legislature for the sixth year in a row will not allow the increase in taxable values to fund the needs of education by keeping the revenues generated by the required local effort at the same level as last year. Thankfully, our local citizens value public education and continue to support the special On Slide 7, this graph represents the total state appropriations, both operating and fixed capital outlay, as a percentage of the total over the last four years. The first grouping, education, includes early learning, public schools, community colleges, and universities. You can see the percentage of the budget for education appropriations is slightly increased from the prior year, from 28.6% to 29% of the budget. You will note the general government portion of the budget went down. However, the effects of the pandemic and its impact on the state budget is unknown at this time. On Slide 8, this graph represents just the education appropriations as a percentage of the total over the last four years. As you can see in the second grouping, public schools increased 3.7% over the last year. This increase is primarily due to both the estimated growth in student enrollment of more than 32,000 FTE statewide and the new teacher salary increase categorical component added to the FEFP. On Slide 9, we have a comparison of funding per student over the last 13 years. This graph is based upon the second calculation for all years with the exception of July 2020, which reflects the conference report numbers. We won't have the second calculation until mid-July. We show you the funding per student back this far because this is prior to the Great Recession and also prior to the special millage. For the upcoming year, the proposed regular per-student funding is $167 above last year's amount, shown in orange. This equates to 2.18% increase in per-student funding. However, the legislature has included the new teacher salary increase allocation into the FEFP, which increases the funding amount by 37.4 million for OCPS or $179 per student. Including our special millage, shown in dark blue, our total per-student increase excluding the teacher salary increase allocation is $41.85 per student. Even with the special millage and including all of the categoricals, you can see we still have a reduction in purchasing power of around $619 per student over the July 2007 amount. Without the voters in Orange County supporting the special millage, we would not, we would have to make significant reductions in services and programs in our district. The CPI or inflation factor being used is less than 2% on average over the last 12 This Slide 10 is a history of Orange County public schools' millage rates. Required local effort set by the state is in the dark navy portion in the middle of each bar. You can see that the RLE has decreased by 1.81 mils since FY '10. The legislature sets the millage rate school districts are required to levy, and in 10 of the last 11 years, they have rolled back millage rate, preventing districts from realizing an increase in funding from the gains in property values. However, county governments and municipalities' millage rates are not controlled by the legislature, therefore permitting them to benefit from increases in property values as millage rates are maintained. The millage rate for FY '21 is an estimate based upon the conference report coming from the legislature. Our final RLE millage rate will not be known until after July 1st, when the property appraiser certifies the tax rule. Slide 11. Given the shortfall in revenues we're seeing at the state and local level, it is likely only a matter of time before the impact will be hitting the operating budget. If there is no special session to adjust the state budget for revenue impacts, then there will likely be mid-year adjustments after the election that will reduce our per-student funding. Last week, the governor announced recommendations to reopen Florida's education system. The health and safety of students and staff will be a top priority. Compensation to employees continues to be a board priority. At this point, the legislature has included the teacher salary increase allocation, which provides a goal of bringing the minimum classroom teacher salary to 47,500. The district received 1.7 million in additional mental health assistance funding, which aligns with the board's priority to support mental health. Instructional support for teaching and learning is driven by our strategic plan with high expectations for student learning. The last three bullets come directly from the special millage ballot language. The special millage continues to be folded into your operating budget and treated as recurring revenue to support our current level of operations. On Slide 12. The legislature significantly increased FRS rates for the upcoming year. The retirement rate for the regular class is changing from 8.47% to 10%. The impact to the general fund is $15.5 million. If we add in the cost to food and nutrition services and grants, the total impact is $17.2 million. 1.5% of the current year salary increase, equivalent to 17 million, will have to be accounted for in this next year's budget. The family empowerment scholarship program began in the current year and provided 18,000 scholarships statewide. For this coming year, the legislature more than doubled the number of scholarships available to almost 47,000. The current year impact to OCPS was 1,731 scholarships going to private schools, resulting in a reduction to the district of $10.6 million. Student enrollment has projected family empowerment scholarship enrollment of 2,357 for the coming year, but estimating scholarship demand is difficult with little history. It is too soon to determine the full extent of budget adjustments that may be necessary. In the current year, we have minimized unnecessary expenditures in an effort to save dollars, and we are implementing various academic return on investment results as shared previously with the board. We just began receiving information from the Department of Education on the CARES Act funding this past Friday. These non-recurring dollars will not be available until next fiscal year. We must submit plans to DOE by June 30th on how we will incorporate this funding into our budget. Again, our primary allocation is around 55 million. Once we deduct the amounts for private schools of 5.1 million in equitable services and charter schools at 3.6 million, our net will be around $46 million. We have already committed 8 million for the last of the one-to-one devices for students. The consensus among Florida districts is to preserve the majority of the CARES Act funds in preparation of anticipated revenue shortfalls. There are other non-recurring dollars from the governor's emergency education relief fund that will also be made available. We are still waiting on further details from DOE on these dollars. On Slide 13. Here is a pie chart that represents where the dollars are spent in our district. The most current state ranking for administrative cost per student identifies OCPS as having the sixth lowest administrative cost per student out of the 67 school districts. No large school district is ranked higher than OCPS. On Slide 14. Board policy requires a minimum of 3% of unassigned fund balance for fiscal emergencies. As of the current year budget, that amounts to $55 million. We started the current year with an unassigned fund balance of 95 million. The balance is reduced by the 16.9 million for the delay in health insurance premium plan changes, as well as the 17 million for the first year of the additional 1.5% salary increase provided to all employees. This brings our unassigned fund balance to 62 million. The district's efforts to respond to the needs from the pandemic, as well as efforts to limit spending to essential needs to support our core business, will result in changes to our unassigned fund balance at year end. We anticipate our unassigned fund balance to be higher than previously projected, and that should help to prepare for this coming year's anticipated revenue shortfall. On Slide 15. We show that food service meal prices will again remain the same as this past year. The Florida Department of Agriculture monitors district food service operations and requires various actions. The food service budget has been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. The costs for personal protective equipment, grab-and-go meals, premium pay for employees, and costs for temporary help from contracted services has contributed to an estimated reduction in food service reserves of $10.6 million. The good news is the FNS program has ample reserves to absorb the loss. We began the year with a $40 million fund balance. Some of the planned equipment replacements were postponed to lessen the impact on reserves. The program is required to maintain 28 million in reserves, and we estimate we will end around 30 million. We will need to continue our efforts to help our legislature understand the importance of adequately funding traditional public education. While our local citizens strongly support our schools, as evidenced by the overwhelming 84% support for renewing the special millage, the state continues its philosophy of reducing the required local effort. For the month of April, the state was under projection 878.1 million in general revenue. State sales tax specifically was down 598.2 million or 24.1%. We will continue to monitor revenues at the state level. At this time, we cannot predict the long-term effect of the pandemic on K-12 education in the state. Only time will tell how different instruction will look in the future and how we will need to adjust our approach to meet the needs of our students and community. Currently, our special millage is expected to generate an estimated $160 million this year. At nearly 9% of recurring revenues, the special millage is vital to supporting our current level of operations. And now Judith Padres will present the capital budget.
Good evening. On Slide 18. This is our five-year forecast of capital revenues. Our primary capital revenues come from sales taxes, property taxes, and impact fees. The largest projected source of revenues for the upcoming fiscal year is property taxes. Property taxes are based on the current property valuation, which are the assessed values as of January 1st of each year, and projected out at a 1% property valuation growth. Once the Office of Economic and Demographic Research releases their projections, the property tax estimated revenues will be updated starting in fiscal year '22. Property taxes are more stable than sales taxes and impact fees. The tax base, though, will likely be impacted by this economic downturn, but the more significant effects will not be felt until the fiscal year '22 budget year. For the current year, our property tax collections are trending below projections, but this is primarily due to taxes being refunded to taxpayers based upon legal challenges to their assessments. In prior years, sales tax revenues have been the largest source of funds for the capital budget. However, as this graph shows, those revenues do not represent the largest source in the upcoming two years. We will further discuss sales tax revenues in the next slide. Impact fees are the third-largest revenue source. Projections are based on current collection trends. OCPS tracks the number of permits pulled district-wide, and this serves as a basis for projecting impact fees. For PICO, this year again, the current appropriations bill shows all of the PICO funding being appropriated to charter schools. The legislature is fully funding the charter school capital appropriation and is not requiring school districts to share our capital millage with charter schools. This is the second year in a row that we receive no PICO funding. The other state category reflects the state capital, outlay, and debt service dollars. We're anticipating to receive 8 million for this upcoming year, and these funds are mostly earmarked for safety purposes. This is Slide 19 on sales tax revenue projections. This is Slide 19 on sales tax revenue projections. Of all our revenue sources, the most impacted by COVID-19 is sales tax. Over 55% of the revenues that we collect are generated by tourism. The parks closed down in mid-March. Once they reopen, they will not do so at full capacity. Until our tourism numbers return to normal levels, we should expect significant shortfalls over prior estimates for sales tax collections. Just for reference, in this current year, our revenues dropped by 37% during the month of March. The parks were closed for only half of the month. For the months of April and May, in which the parks were not open at all, we're anticipating, based on our own analysis, our revenues to drop by 74%. This is the equivalent of about 16 to 17 million per month. For fiscal year '20, our revised revenue projections totaled 242 million. This is $33 million below budget. In this graph, we're showing the sales tax revenue projections as estimated in the fiscal year '20 adopted budget, that's in gold, and as projected as part of the fiscal year '21 plan, in orange. From this graph, we can appreciate the significant revenue shortfall that is being forecasted for fiscal year '21 and '22. In fiscal year '21, revenues are being projected to be potentially 138 million below what had originally been projected for this year. Likewise, the revenues for fiscal year '22 are estimated to be 74 million below what had been projected for that year as part of the fiscal year '20 adopted CIP. We will continue to closely monitor collections to ensure that our funding allocations can still be met. Slide 20. Next, we will go over our draft plan for the use of capital funds in the upcoming year. It is important to note that this does not include any carryforward funds at this point. This is just based on revenues and balances moving forward. The largest portion of our draft capital plan is being used for additional schools, that is at 28%. Following that, we're showing comprehensive needs at almost 28%. This category includes funding for the schools on the original sales tax list, repurposed facilities, as well as funding for the pre-2003 sales tax schools, which are those that did not make it to the original sales tax list. The next largest category on our draft use of capital funds is debt service and operations at 18%, which are primarily dollars to service our district debt. And then the next would be educational technology, which includes funding for infrastructure needed to conclude our one-to-one digital program, as well as to cover expenditures related to technology equipment replacement. There will be significant dollars added to comprehensive needs, district-wide capital, and additional schools once the carryforward projects are folded in. On Slide 21. Because the sales tax revenues are the most affected by the current economic situation, we wanted to present you the list of projects or initiatives that are currently being proposed to be funded from sales tax in this draft capital plan. As we have explained before, the projected decline in sales tax revenues may call for capital needs to be reprioritized. We have provided you a draft CIP plan, but we will need your direction in terms of prioritizing as adjustments may be necessary as we track our sales tax collections versus budgeted revenues this year. These are the initiatives or major categories that are being funded through sales tax revenues in this draft CIP plan. The first one is the completion of the original list of 136 schools. This draft allocates the funding needed to complete the list in alliance with the proposed facilities construction and funding request schedule. At this point, the last school in the list will be completed in 2024. Relief schools. This draft includes sales tax funding for the construction of five relief schools. Some of the schools are being partially funded from sales tax. When we get to the next slide, we will discuss more in-depth relief schools, but our draft CIP is funding relief schools in the year recommended by the Advanced Planning Committee. Digital curriculum. This is our one-to-one initiative. This plan includes funding to address infrastructure needs related to the program. With all the schools going one-to-one, this is the last year in this plan in which sales tax funding is allocated to the program. Capital renewal. In accordance with the referendum, a portion of the sales tax revenues is transferred to the capital renewal fund to cover major system replacement needs. This draft plan continues to fund that transfer. Based on anticipated projects, we are estimating that the capital renewal fund will be exhausted by fiscal year 2029. Functional equity. These are projects primarily intended to add permanent instructional space and replace some portables at schools where the current capacity is less than the district's prototype and the enrollment projection supports the need for additional classrooms. Pre-2003 sales tax schools. These are the schools that never made it to the original sales tax list because of the recent construction work at that time. The list includes 20 schools planned to be paid from sales tax and 10 ancillary facilities that are planned to be funded from property taxes. Our draft CIP shifts 45 million of the funds requested in fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '23. This funding shift allows the plan to align revenues and expenditures while continuing the funding of this initiative through fiscal year '26. On Slide 22. We're showing our five-year new school openings. Our CIP is funding schools based on the opening year recommended by the Advanced Planning Committee. We have three new schools opening this coming August, followed by three schools, two high schools, and one elementary school opening in August of 2021. On Slide 23. In August of 2022, we're opening three elementary schools along with one K-8 and one middle. In August of 2023, we have two middle schools to open. Again, the opening years in this draft CIP aligns with the AP Committee's recommendation. On Slide 24. To close out the five-year new openings, we have two elementary schools opening in August of 2024. Comprehensive projects that are in construction, that's on Slide 25. We have two projects that are moving into the construction phase this next year. Orange Technical College at Orlando and at Westside. This list does not include carryover projects that are also continuing, such as the ESE Learning Center and Meadowwoods Middle School. On Slide 26. We have comprehensive projects in design. The design of Orange Technical College at Mid-Florida and Winter Park is projected to be completed in fiscal year '21. These are part of the final school projects from the original list of 136 sites. In addition, four pre-2003 sales tax projects will be moving into the design phase during fiscal year '21. Those are Howard, Lakeview, Three Points, and Winter Park High School. On Slide 27. Our draft CIP plan also includes funding for digital curriculum, which is entering its final phase, bases which are on a 10-year replacement cycle, funding for portables and leasing is included to help manage population fluctuations, charter school funding, which is just a flow-through from the state, and there are dollars again included in the plan for district-wide painting needs. On Slide 28. For long-range plan highlights. The last of the original sales tax projects are budgeted for construction in July of 2022. Our plan includes 22 relief schools, 13 elementary schools, one K-8, four middle schools, and four high schools. Our draft allows capital renewal to continue to receive funding as long as the sales tax is in place, which currently ends on December of 2025. The last year for appropriations of capital renewal is 2029, as the funds are exhausted at this point in the plan. Digital rollout is being completed. Dollars are included for repurposing schools. Function and equity dollars are also included within the plan, and pre-2003 sales tax schools are funded through fiscal year '26. On Slide 29. For future issues. We estimate our revenues to not normalize until at least three years. We will continue to monitor them, and if needed, will implement budget plan changes with your direction. If revenues decline, there will be projects that are in our current long-range plan that will need to be reprioritized. As part of our normal process, we annually review our enrollment projections to adjust our relief schools in the plan. Lastly, the halfpenny sales tax currently ends as of December 31st to 2025. A decision on renewing this revenue will need to be considered in the coming years.
All right, back over to me just for a minute, just to close this out. Just wanted to go over briefly next steps. So our tentative budget will be based on the second calculation. So our tentative budget will be based on the second calculation that will be provided by the Department of Education around July 17th. Then we'll have the budget advertisement appear in the paper July 26th, and the board members should receive a flash drive with all the details of the budget around July 27th, just so you know when to expect things to come. Then we'll have our public hearing, our first public hearing, on July 30th. Key points to remember are that the approval of the tentative millage rate and the total budget is what is required at those public hearings. As with most budgets, adjustments can be made between the tentative and final adoption, as well as throughout the year. The public hearing for the adopted budget is on September 8th. And with that, I thank my team and turn it back over to Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, and certainly thanks to Ms. Cocalino and Padres for your presentation as well. Members of the board, as you can well see, it's not a pretty picture for what may transpire in the coming months. I have instructed central office departments to plan for a 2% holdback on their department budgets. As I've mentioned previously, hopefully that will help us get to an even footing, considering the 17 million for the 1.5% additional increase to employees provided last year, as well as what we will need to contribute for the Florida retirement system. Those dollars make the budget seem a bit tight at this point. We are waiting further information from Tallahassee regarding some additional supplemental resources. We're also cautious because there could very well be a start of the school year with no potential budget cuts and then a January session, as some of you have mentioned, where there may be eventual holdbacks or adjustments to the negative in our budget. That being said, we are committed to bringing you a balanced budget as required by statute. We will keep you informed as we learn more. Madam Chair, members of the board, ready to answer any questions and hear your discussion?
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Let me begin by commending the team for this very dreary presentation and alarming, but excellent job in presenting all the information so the board has a very real grasp of what we're facing. I do have one technical question I didn't understand. If you can help me with the pre-2003 sales tax schools. I know you explained it, but I'm not, I didn't quite grasp it, so it left me a little bit lost. Can you go through that one more time for me? Thank you.
All right.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Back when they did the original sales tax, they did an inventory of all the schools and did an assessment, and they determined at that point in time, if schools had construction work, major construction work done within a short period of time, they would not be included in the 136 list of schools. But now we've had that initial 13 years of sales tax, plus we're well into this next 10 years, and so those schools are well-dated. So now, it really makes sense, you have to go back and address the needs of those pre, what we call pre-2003 schools, because they were never included in the plan, but now so much time has passed, they have needs.
So if I can say that back and confirm if I have that right. At the time, they weren't, they did not need major renovation projects because they were still relatively new, but so much time has passed that they need to be included in at this stage.
You are correct.
Got it, okay. So I think, I think most of you know that one of my focuses since being on the board has been making sure that the board is very engaged in how we allocate our precious capital dollars. But looking at what we are faced with this coming year, and of course, we're faced with the effects of House Bill 7103, which has taken away the ability of Orange County to mitigate impacts, which will have a negative potential effect on the economy. But notwithstanding that, I also look at these alarming numbers and with sales tax and the projection that I can only imagine next year could look like if our theme parks and hotels do not recover well, as they will probably want to see their property tax values assessed downwards based on income, that the bigger challenge for us or the more immediate pressing challenge may be our operations. And so, Mr. Kelly, I know that there is some flexibility, but not a lot of flexibility in the use of capital versus operating. Are, is, will you be presenting us a budget that shares with us the maximum flexibility that we have in terms of the use of our resources?
We can do that, yes.
Okay. It pains me enormously to say that, but our first priority has to be that our children have an education and that our teachers are there to provide that education, I think. And my second priority is that they have the right facility overhead, but, but we, I just, I am very alarmed at how these numbers look and how dramatically we, the decline that we saw in March, which was only half a month. And I hope that our fears do not bear out, but we have to prepare for the possibility that we do have a second wave and that this continues. And if it does, I think we're going to have to look at every possible avenue to make sure that we continue with the employee personnel, this instructional personnel that we have to educate our children. So I just, just wanted to share that kind of gloomy prospect. Again, I pray for hope and for miracles, and I believe all things may turn out for the best, but I also just inherently have to prepare for the worst. So let me call now on Member Gallo.
I have two also. I don't know if you have a timer, but Vice Chair Gould chimed in at 4:55 and Dr. Gordon chimed in at 4:58.
Okay. Okay, thank you for letting me know. And so what I'm going to do, because I did not have a timer, Member Gallo chimed in quite a while ago, and Member Cobert, so I'll take Member Gallo, Cobert, and then tell me again the order. Was it?
Vice Chair Gould.
Oh, hell no.
And Dr. Gordon.
Member Gallo?
Madam Chair, and thank you guys for all this information. It was a lot to process. I don't know.
Excuse me, I'm, Madam Chair.
Yes, Dr. Gordon.
I need to know the speaking order because there needs to be a better way. I keep telling you all, you forget us out here in La La Land. The General Counsel stated that Pam Gould chimed in at 4:55. I chimed in at 4:58. Can you give me the time that Ms. Gallo chimed in?
No, I cannot because that, Dr. Gordon, the system that we're on, as you know, does not have a timer on it. I probably timed in at about 4:30 because I had a very early question, and shortly after that, Member Gallo.
Madam Chair, you didn't even call the roll until way after 4:30, so it couldn't have been any chiming in.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Dr. Gordon, you're right, it wasn't at 4:30. Dr. Gordon, I can't tell you the answer to your question. If you'd like to go first, Dr. Gordon, if everybody's all right, let's let Dr. Gordon go first. Dr. Gordon, you're recognized.
No, no.
Yes, Dr. Gordon, you're recognized, please.
And if, I would like to be fair. I think, I think Ms. Gould was at, I'm watching, you had to come back and get the roll. And Ms. Gallo, somebody needs to hit our name on your speaking order, because I am not going to be left out of this discussion. So Ms. Gould is at 4:55, and Ms. Gallo, I don't know what time, and it was not 4:30, it was not 4:45, so I don't know if she did it immediately after the roll or when she did it. But I do know that I will precede Ms. Pam Gould in the manner in which you want to call us, but you have got to pay attention because we are out here in La La Land.
So, Dr. Gordon, let me, let me try to explain the challenge that I have. I completely understand what you're saying, and I agree with you. Before we started the meeting, I asked our staff if they could please raise their hand as soon as one of you that is on the line. So that I could try to keep track. Dr. Gordon, can I finish my comment, please? Dr. Gordon, I have the floor. Can I please finish explaining? What I wanted to be able to do, I have a piece of paper, I wanted to keep track of the moment you or the Vice Chair asked to be recognized, so I could do just what you asked for. Unfortunately, I did not know either one of you asked to be recognized until I had already announced myself, Angie, and Member Cobert. So I do not have that order, not because I don't care or I didn't try, I don't have it. I'm sorry that we have not mastered this better. I suggested at the beginning of the meeting that at the next meeting, that we have a sign that either Ms. Enval or Dr. Jenkins can hold up the moment one of you on the phone asks to be recognized, so that I can keep track of the time. It is important to me to be fair.
And, Madam Chair, I thought that was the instruction. We immediately, you see she did an excellent job in getting the 4:55 and the 4:58. You were in the middle of, they were explaining and doing what they need to do, there was no, okay, go do what you want to do, Chair. You go ahead.
The problem, I understand, Dr. Gordon, the problem is that I did not record the time when my fellow board members logged in, and I didn't know until after the fact, after I'd announced the speaking order of the board members, that what time you had logged in. So had we worked this out to where I knew I had to keep track of this time, I thought what was going to happen was I was going to see a hand go up the moment you wanted to be recognized, then I could look down and see if anybody else was in the speaking order. Again, we have work to do, it is not intentional. Please believe me, it is not intentional. Let's do this, because you're right, we know that the Vice Chair was a minute or two ahead of you. Let's recognize the Vice Chair, then we'll take Dr. Gordon, and then we'll take Member Gallo, and then we'll take Member Cobert. Does everybody agreeable to that? Okay, Vice Chair, are you with us?
I am, I'm here.
You're recognized.
Okay, so there are a couple of clarifications that I would like to make. So one is the 1.5% raise that was in the contract on page 14, I believe, with the reserves, we have that money in hand and we can cover that. Secondly, on that slide, there was a comment.
Vice Chair, Vice Chair, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. If you can hear me, we're having a little bit of trouble hearing you, so I'm going to ask for some technical support in raising the volume of your mic on our end. And then I know there is a question about the 1.5%. Can you repeat the question? Mr. Kelly is also leaning.
I can.
And trying to hear the question. Thank you.
Okay, and I've taken you off speaker, so that may help.
That helps us great deal, thank you.
Okay, great. On page 14, we were talking about the reserves, and I see, and it was pointed out, that the 17 million for the first year of the additional 1.5 raise is, is in there. So in essence, we don't have a shortfall there, I want to clarify that. But that means that that, that raise that we committed to is covered with funds that we have in hand.
Let, let's stop there for a minute. Let, Member, Vice Chair, let's stop there for a minute for clarification, because if we're talking about next year's budget, let me go to Mr. Kelly. Mr. Kelly?
Yes, Board Member Gould, you're right, in the current year, we did use the 17 million to cover the additional 1.5% raise, but that cost is a recurring cost, so now you all agreed to pay for it the first year out of reserves, now it has to be built back into the budget with recurring revenues to fund that, because that is a recurring expense. So it is impacting this next year's operating budget.
Okay. So then a follow-up question there. Let's just clarify what's in the reserves right now. Do we have enough in this extraordinary times? I know what the intent was last year, and we all felt pretty good about it because of the robust economy we were living in prior to March. But do we currently have enough to be sure that we could cover that today if we didn't have to buy lots of COVID PPE and all of those things? Is there enough to cover that secondary budget for one more time?
And can I ask a follow-up clarification before you answer that? Vice Chair, are you, your first part of that question was in our reserves. Are you talking about, do we have that in reserves, or are you talking about, do we have that in operating?
Above the minimum 3%.
Do we have that in reserves?
We tried to get.
Do we currently have that allocate, that ability to cover that in the upcoming budget above the minimum 3% that were required by the state? I just want to know that, because that's a commitment that we made, that there is absolutely nothing we can do about.
Yeah. On Slide 14, we tried to give you some of that information, maybe we weren't as clear as we could have been, but the last bullet tells you our adjusted unassigned fund balance once you deduct what we had to contribute for that first year of the one-half, 1.5% raise, plus what we had to deduct for delaying the premium and plan changes, that brought us down to 62 million, which is very close to your minimum of 3%. So to answer your question, at this point in time, we'd say no. Now, we're hoping to preserve funds as we're finishing out this year, and hopefully we can boost that up a little, but I cannot say no, we would not have enough to, to preserve your 3% and pay that again.
Okay, and then I believe you also said in that, that slide, that we are projected to beat the, the unassigned budget?
Yes, we are, we are hoping to, as we preserve funds, we've had to spend some that we normally wouldn't have spent for various things related to the pandemic, but we've also reduced spending in areas as we're closing out the year and with the distance learning. And so hopefully, we can end up a little better than we expected to be, but we expected to be more like the 62. Hopefully, we'll get a little more than that, but it's, it's very difficult to estimate at this point in time. But we really don't close out all the books until September.
But it won't cover the 17 million. On the best day, it won't cover the 17 million, probably.
No.
Completely, okay. So that, that's just a clarification that I wanted to understand, because that's an important commitment that we just can't alter. The next, the next question that I had or clarification, I think you were talking on page 16, they were referring to the state sales tax going down, was it 91%? I just want to have that percentage correct that was coming from the notes.
It went down 24.1% in the month of April.
For the state.
For the state as a whole, yeah, our, our county here in Orange, we had a significant shortfall just in the month, half a month, in the month of March, which only really had the effects of the pandemic, maybe for a half a month, we were down 37%. So our economy, I think, here in Orange County is much more reliant upon tourism, which has been hit very hard, and so our sales tax, we feel comfortable saying will be much, will drop much lower than the state as a whole.
So I'm going to jump to, to capital now, and, and I'm actually wrote some notes on page 60 or 27. I see all of the replacement costs, I, we went through all of the schools that are currently in the plan. You went through what will be exhausted out of the sales tax ending in '25, being done by '29. What I don't see is have we, have we looked at alternative ways to create schools? I brought this up at another work session or board meeting, looking at, what can we do to look at some of these box store spaces and some other non-traditional spaces that already have parking lots built in, infrastructure in place? Has any of that been taken into consideration up to this point? If, if not, because of time, when can we kind of look at a little analysis of that? I think there's going to be some real estate available that may be much cheaper and still keep us on track with managing growth. So I don't know if you can answer that this evening or not.
Madam Chair. Dr. Jenkins, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Member Gould, we don't have anything to report on that. We will certainly keep it all under consideration. Keep in mind, we do still have certain requirements for acreage for our schools to be built, and so we can look at creative measures, but we don't have an ability to give you a solid answer at this point. Under our current requirements, we don't have the same leisure as, say, for example, charter schools do in where they actually play schools, but it is certainly a recommendation that we've taken seriously, just need to have time to work around it, because there are regulations that would not allow it at this point.
Right, understood, and probably this would be a good time to open up those conversations where it may not have been in the past. My last question is, can we, I know we have to have 180 days of school, but is that broken out in hours? And can we actually look, if we needed to, at reducing the number of days as long as we? we get the same number of hours in, if we ever had to go to a split schedule or something like that? And would that save us any money?
Seat time is actually in hours. And so, um, there are some, there may be some flexibility that would be a waiver requested from the state. And we are having those discussions as well.
Okay, because I was thinking, even if you have people on site, you know, the same day, you may not have as many bus runs. There just may be some efficiencies we find that we wouldn't normally have.
Understood, understood. That would just require waivers from the state. And as you mentioned, uh, Member Gould, there may be opportunities for that kind of flexibility, given the predicament that we find ourselves in.
At, at this point, Chair, I am done with my comments and questions, and I'll look forward to the rest of the discussion with the board.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Let me recognize now Dr. Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. This is my best time of the year. You don't know that, but it is. My best time, my favorite time, um, looking at the superintendent bringing in a balanced budget for us to work with so that we would be able to approve it in September. I do have some concerns with this budget, and I'm going to take my time because it's my last time being able to speak on the operating and capital budget in a work session. Being that that is the case, I will start at page, just give me a minute. And I think, um, Board Member Gould did hit me with a couple, which was very, very good. Um, I, if you would go to page nine, I just need some clarification on page nine with the budget and funding per student, so we can get an understanding of what that really is. Am I hearing $179 per student? But then I'm also hearing a reduction in the, um, student costs. So just put that down as a question, and you could come back and answer that. So that's page nine. Okay? Then if you would go to page 10. Um, and, and you mentioned about the, um, once the property appraised, I know certified that tax roll, that's going to be a lot to us. But like you stated, you constantly see it decreasing. I don't see where that is going to increase. So I need to know what kind of impact is that RLE is, what kind of impact it's going to have? Because I continue to see a decreasing here. And I know that millage rate is going to sign and die. So I did not hear the date of the sign and die of the millage. And, um, I think you said maybe F pound 21, but I'm not sure the exact date is in September. When is it? You can give, if somebody, if nobody knows that answer real quick, because I'm not going to sit up here and give you all my questions, and then you guys sit there and don't try to answer.
Dr. Gordon, um, Mr. Kelly's ready to answer your questions now, if you want to start with those. Let's start with those, and then we'll come right back to you. Mr. Kelly, the first three questions?
Very quick, nothing, I don't want them to be a dissertation. I just need something quick.
All right, the, the reduction in the RLE just for this year cost the state budget over 341 million. Or for our district, OCPS, it's about $25 million we lost because the RLE is projected to go down for this year.
And I, I needed, I needed people to know that, that we lost that kind of money. 25 million is a heck of a lot that could be used in those areas in which we were using this money. Do you want to add something else? But I did not hear that in the report, and that needed to be brought out.
All right, the other, the other question you had back on page nine, I just wanted to go back there. When you add in the categorical, in this year, the legislature approved a large categorical for the teacher salary increase allocation. When you add those dollars in, when you look at total dollars per student, it was $179 increase. But like I said, much of that is attributable to that new categorical. And then if, if you add, add in our special millage on top of that, because that isn't in the state numbers, but if you back out that large teacher salary increase, it ends up being only like $41.85 per student, just to cover the-
That needed to be brought out because I did not hear that in the report because what I wanted to say, this millage is going to sign and die. And that, I don't know why we are adding it. I know we have to, but it's not, it's almost, it's not like continuous reoccurring fund. Do you understand what I'm talking about here?
Yes.
So where does that leave us with it? Because there's a major reduction, you already showed us that. So how do we, where do we go from here?
Well, we are still waiting to see whether, you know, the governor is actually going to sign off on the budget, then, and what you see is basically what you're going to get, at least to start the year. We don't know what the revenue projections will ultimately be for the state and what that will mean to us as we go throughout the year. But this is kind of where we will start the current fiscal year with, with the budget.
Okay, and, and I really needed to point out to the public, and, and, um, that, what you see is what you probably going to get. And I got, it scares me because I think it might even be less. I think every time he goes up to Washington, those who believe in him, it comes back something shorter than before. Okay, very good. Now, I needed to ask about, um, on page 11, where we are preserving the academic programs, retain highly qualified teachers, and protect the arts, athletic, and student activity. Now, that was the, that's what we fought for, and those, those were our major priorities. When is the sign and die of this millage?
23, fiscal year 23.
So how many years is that from today? I'm sorry to be elementary, but I am a K through 12 teacher.
There'll be two more budgets after this coming one.
Okay, you hear my tense of urgency here? There will be no, where, where would we get more money to preserve academic programs? Where would we get more money, Mr. Kelly, to retain highly qualified teachers? And where will we get more money to protect arts, athletic, and student activity when the county mayor is asking for sale tax himself and because of the pandemic, as to put it all? What plan did you bring to us as a board for this? This is two years from today.
The board, I'll defer to the superintendent on that one.
Madam Chair?
Dr. Jenkins, you're recognized.
Dr. Gordon, you raise an important point. There will come a time, uh, it is certainly, uh, reasonable that there will come a time this board, or a future board, will need to decide whether or not to go out again for that additional millage. Uh, 2023 will be here, uh, probably sooner than most people realize. There's the slightest possibility that there might be significant funding increase at the state level so that we would not have to ask our local community to supplement those dollars. But that's not something we can count on at this point. And so you raise an important, an important issue. It will have to be considered in the future whether or not, uh, the board would go out to extend that prior to the end of fiscal year 23.
And, and, and in present time, for every one of our failed tax and millage, it took us two years to plan to get to where we were in order for that to happen. Because as you stated, I'm glad there might be a ram in the bush, but the ram may not come to OCPS. That, that troubles me. It, it troubles me of where we're going to be. And these are our priorities, Madam, uh, Superintendent. But thank you, you gave me a very good answer. I don't know of the other board mem, I'm not worried about the other board members. I'm worried about the students in Orange County. I'm worried about the teachers. I'm worried about the arts and athletic program and the students' activity that the previous board and this board fought very hard for as citizens, to see that these major priorities are done. So that is something that needs to star by it. Uh, I think, I think it's very, very important. The next one is the retirement system. That's on page 12. So they mention about, uh, 47,000, I couldn't get that. Money was going to private schools. Am I, am I missing something there?
On the retirement-
With the deal?
On the retirement system, yeah, the rates are going up from 8.47% for your regular class up to 10%. The impact of that to your general fund budget is about 15.5 million. If you look at your entire budget, it's about 17.2 million. So those dollars would have to be covered within your budget with those living in revenues.
Accounted for. They're going to have to be accounted for. So, okay, the, um, I know that had the bargaining team had an opportunity in their collective collaborative bargaining style to address this issue. Were they fortunate when they met with Ms. Leanne, um, to bring this issue up, to let them know that this is going to impact our budget in a major way?
Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, uh, Dr. Gordon, uh, these kinds of issues have been addressed at the bargaining table. The 17 million, certainly since last year, they knew it would be an impact. And we've, uh, made available information concerning the retirement system. We are still hopeful. We, we certainly are petitioning the governor that they would lessen the impact for the retirement system. That 15.5 million is significant. And so we've had communications with the governor's office. He has not signed the budget yet. Uh, perhaps there can still be some hope, uh, that he will not require all of that in a single year, but we wait to find out.
Thank you. Now, Dr. Jenkins, I do want to highly praise you on this, that you continue to bring us a budget, to show us exactly where the dollar goes. And I have to give you highest accolade to you and your staff. Out of all, like you stated, out of the 67 counties, we have continued to rank up in the top. And as I heard you today, I understand that there's no other district that, uh, rank us. And I think this is something that most boards in the state do not understand, how you are able to do it. And I did hear that, uh, how you are doing it, as you gave us a report. But I want to highly commend you for ranking us, uh, number six in administrative costs. And this is where people in the community and our union, they really get on us, and people running for the school board comes in and think we are spending a lot in administrative costs. So I do want this to be known in the public, that this is not where, this is just a little bit of where our dollars go. And you have kept us on top as far as administrative costs, even though our administrators can be paid more for what they do. We are in a district. And, um, I think that this is, uh, accolade you, so I wanted to give you praise on that, you and your staff. If you all would go to page 14. Um, I, I don't want to go all the way back over it because, um, Vice Chair Gould and I, um, when she brought it up, that was one of my main concerns, the, uh, how we are preparing for the reserve shortfall. And then, um, uh, Mr. Dale Kelly explained it. And, um, the, the occurring expense, but I still got a problem with this. Where, where is this going to leave us? Where is this going to leave us within this school year?
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, as we work to, uh, on the budget, and, uh, as you know, we have to bring back a balanced budget, we will, we continue to look for areas where we can trim in order to, uh, bring back that balanced budget and maintain these, these, uh, raises that were agreed to in the prior, or in the current year.
So, all right, very, so there's a possibility that the superintendent, and I guess she can answer, may have to go back and ask for more than a 2% cut in the department. And then if we do 2%, how endangered are we, how are we killing those departments that would have to cut an additional percentage?
Dr. Jenkins?
I, I cannot hear the superintendent.
You raise an important point. Uh, 2% is significant for central offices, but it cannot, uh, raise enough dollars to cover, uh, 17 million plus another 15 million, uh, without just significantly shutting down some of our central office functions. I appreciate your commendations. We are the only large urban district in those top six, uh, for administrative costs. So we're pretty lean. We run fairly lean. What some folks may not remember is years ago, when we had significant shortfalls, we actually had to have schools decide on trimming their budget. And in that instance, we actually said, I believe it was up to 6% because we were in such a hole. And then over the next couple of years, we restored that 6%. We have not had to look at schools, hope that we will not have to look at schools. We will look at every other possibility, uh, including some of those CARES dollars and potentially additional dollars from the state and the federal government before we look to schools. If you have a significant shortfall, if something happens in January and we're asked to set aside dollars, uh, they've asked us to be mindful to save our CARES dollars acts precisely for that potential, uh, shortfall. We believe, we hope that the state would look to its rainy day fund and, uh, hopefully patch any of the holes and deficits in our, um, income through those methods. But we have to be prepared, uh, nonetheless, for worst-case scenarios. So we will be looking, uh, to reserve all of our, uh, funding as closely as possible without touching the schools at this point.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, that's a blessing to hear. So I, I will move on to page 15, and I commend you again with the serve, food service enterprise and how you all have been able to carry it out, feed the entire community, plus more, and business people involved. This is just incredible. But I did hear Mr. Kelly say that 28 million, Madam Chair, and Madam Superintendent and Mr. Kelly, um, to remain in the reserve and then, but we will probably end with 2 million. Now, people running for school board, they normally pick on any kind of money left in reserve, and there would be 2 million sitting there. Would that be something, uh, I, I don't approve of it being negotiable because look at what the pandemic did to us and what we had to do. But with that 2 million in reserve, sitting there, the 28 million to remain in reserve, and ending with the 30 million, is there any way, uh, that some people might want to come back and say, well, let's take that and move it somewhere else? And, and I do know, so just to share that with me, can it be moved or can it be only used for food service?
Mr. Kelly?
Those reserve dollars are restricted and have to be used exclusively for food service. And it is just an estimate.
People don't realize that those are restricted funds because they go through this budget like I go through this budget. Thank you so much. The next page is 16. Um, the, the future issues that are coming up, will you explain to me the 9% of occurring revenues?
The, the special millage, as, as it produces revenues each year, when you look at our total revenue picture, it's really providing 9% of our current recurring revenues. So that's integral to our budget. Without that, we would have to make significant reductions in our current level of operations, programs, and school support if we did not have that special millage supporting our budget.
And Mr. , Mr. Kelly, did we not just discuss this a minute ago? This millage is going to sign and die in two years?
That's correct.
Wow.
It only, it only lasts for four years.
Okay, so we, we got some work to do, don't we? Okay, thank you on that. I'm just making people aware, this is my last time, I'm moving over to the capital budget. Okay. The, I needed to know on page 20, when we are spending the 8.54% for the digital and educational technical? What, I thought we were pretty well set. So is this new money for the- for the capital project? Did we get a project that came in, additional money from the state? Please advise.
Mr. Kelly?
These are dollars we're using to complete out our digital program. We have a lot of infrastructure that has to be completed. We did use some CARES money to buy devices, but you gotta have the back, the support, the infrastructure behind that for those schools. So that's what these dollars help support.
Okay, so that helps with that. Is there an amount of money? I did not see that. Million?
Yeah, later in the, uh, if I could refer you back to page 27, it does provide the dollar amount for that digital curriculum initiative.
I haven't got 27. I got a question there when I get there.
All right.
Okay, I'll wait. But that's it? That's where the money is?
Yes.
It, it's in the 16.8 million?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. Okay, um, let's go on to number 21. I'm not gonna be happy. This is the complete list of 136 schools. You stated to me, and this is the relief school. And then there's your digital curriculum again. But you stated that the last school will be completed in 2024. And then you went on to say 2029, the fiscal funds is exhausted. I need to leave with this board, and I hope that the present board will not fall back into the vestiges of previous and past boards, other than the board that was under the leadership of, um, I don't want to call all of the chairmen, but I would say during the time we worked on the desegregation order. I also want to say for those chairmen and ex board members that worked close handily with me and my community, to make sure that we get unitary status. The legal department that worked there behind all to say that the vestiges are fair. In the wake of George Floyd, I hope that I'm not looking at this budget right. If I can recall, in the last budget, one of my schools was taken off of the daggone list. I distinctly asked the superintendent and the board, and I'm gonna ask Legal Counsel Amy Enville to pull that up. I won't make you do it today, but you need to pull up 118-dash-E-dash-SW-5. There's no way in the world that I would like to see this board vote that this school will not be completed until 2025. Then you already say the last school will be completed in 2024. Yes, I will be gone. That I might be 90-something years old and I'll come in on a cane like Sylvia did one time and ask you all, what in the heck are you doing? How in the world are you gonna move a school that should have been built? No one talked to the community? You were out there looking for property. How could you do this? Black lives matter. Hispanic lives matter. Asian eyes matter. Haitian lives matter. I don't believe you did this. Not only did you take the school from the top list that should have been completed in 2020 before I left the board, but you hesitated and act like there was no property to be found anywhere. But that was okay. The community said, fine. Edgewood Community said they did not have a school. They're the only municipality that does not have a school, an elementary school. They asked if the school be named Edgewood after the community. But they had some problems because they didn't want it a certain place. And I know, Dr. Jenkins, you worked extremely hard, but I don't know who brought this recommendation to you. But I will ask that community, we will not walk away and be kicked aside again when we were the last to try to get our schools built until we got unitary status. You all better read your history. You're gonna fall right back into the vestiges. You already had moved the school one time. And we put it back on the agenda to be completed. Then you kept juggling around, having secret meetings, not letting me know nothing about it. And then I was just gonna wait and see where you were gonna put it. Well, guess where you put it? Number 36. All of us who be dead and gone are working somewhere else. Because I hope nobody tried to stay on this board forever. But I, I think that this is wrong. It is doing injustice to that community. They are entitled to their school. We should never have to take a back step because one community is larger than the other. We have unitary status. You build one in that community on the east, on the west, on the north, on the south, you're gonna build two in hours to catch us up. Now you are making us fall right back into the vestiges that we came out. I cannot sit up here on this board and let this happen. This is the mockery at its best. It is, it is the worst thing that I've ever seen. And y'all, y'all know I read my, you know I read the budget. You know I read my board stuff. Ron Buckner used to tell me, you're not the only one that go through with a fine tooth comb. I do. Because I know that we will sit up and vote something in and don't even know what's in the budget. So, Dr. Jenkins, and to this boy, Madam Chair, I, I heard you say this is great. Well, I got news to you. This is mockery. This is dissent. This is disgrace. These children lives matter. The school is overcrowded. And we can't even get one built because of racism. That, this one don't want it in their town. That one don't want it in their town. And now go to page, go to page 20. If you go to page 22, board member, you go too. You go too. Because I'm, I'm, I'm anger. I'm angry. I'm angry. And I'm angry because I don't like how we moved out of that list, how we moved out of relief, and they got the Sunshine, and the Summer Lake, and the Vista Point. And then they got number four, number two, number four, number four, number three, number seven, number four, number two. And then I looked at page 24, when she said it will end. And I said, well, dog, they got me, they got 118 Elementary for District School District 5 sitting at 2025. Another thing I don't like, I'm not very pleased about what's happening. And I'm so sorry that our Director of Orange Technical College had to retire. Because Orange Technical College in Orlando, which is right in the building where you are sitting right now, was a world renowned, that's how we got career ed into the schools, that's how we got technical ed. And Mid-Florida campus, I need to know, the superintendent and Mr. Kelly staff, what are the dates? There are no dates on page 25. What are the dates? What in the heck is this?
The, uh, on, on page 25, those two campuses of Orange Technical College, this next year is when the actual budget dollars, they're entering into construction. So that's what that represents. We're showing you which new projects will actually be entering construction for the first time. That's what the-
No, no, no. Go back to the original list. Mid-Florida and Orlando Tech, this says West Side. Go to page 24, okay? It was, it was Orlando Tech. I don't even see that here. You all gonna have to show me that. I mean, unless, I mean, unless that's the one on 25. And then Mid-Florida is on 26. But there are no dates. There are no dates. I told them, and I wish I had done it first. That should have been, that, that should have been Dubai. That should have been Dubai. We should have had a Metropolitan Center on the corner of Oak Ridge and John Young. Because it's centrally located. But I agreed, I didn't get mad when we moved half of the programs out of Mid-Florida Tech, out of Orlando Tech, and put them on the West Side, put them on the East Side. I didn't get angry. But it could have stayed in the middle. But it didn't. But I said, I'm going to play the Negro. I did say that. And let, and try to be kind. But I think this has just gone a little bit too far. There's nobody, who can give me a date on this?
Madam Chair?
Sorry, Dr. Jenkins?
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. If you look at the top of the page, on page 24, I'm sorry, on page 25, it's fiscal year 2021 that they will be in construction. That's Orange Technical College in Orlando-
No date online.
And then the West Side site. And then on page 26, 2021, the other ones will be in design, normally meaning the following year would be their construction.
Dr. Jenkins, you, we need to go back to COE, to COE, and look at, there's these schools, they're supposed to be well on their way. We put those policies together where we're supposed to have been having those meetings. Not, I'm not happy about this. This, this is wrong. And, and it's always the diverse group got away and take, we did that in the beginning, when we started billing schools. But when we got our unitary status passed, we had to stop and come back and start billing in the, in the predominantly black community, predominantly diverse community of school board District 5. And that's why we were able to complete most of our schools. Dr. Jenkins, there's no date on this. And, and I know the original date because I have it. And if I need to go back and pull that and show it to you, I have every COE report of where they put Mid-Florida Tech. But everybody, you kept putting it off, you're putting it off, you're putting it off, until all the programs have pretty much gone out of there, except for whatever, whoever wanted it there, got what they wanted. I'm not arguing about operation. I'm arguing about building, which falls under school board. This, the building of schools, the comprehensive project and design, that's school board business. And if, and if you're doing it to me, God help. So I'm, I'm not pleased with that. I think we need to go back to where we were. I think we need to go back. You promised the people what we were gonna do. And now we have lost that. We have lost that. And God forbid, I, I, I don't see, we, we, we helped you out. We helped the whole school board out when we came up with Magnolia and Gateway and Charity. And I don't see them in this budget whatsoever. And Gateway and Charity should be in this budget. I, I do not see them in this budget. So it looks as if we're not gonna finish that project and we're gonna be liars. I'm not gonna leave, I'm gonna leave my legacy. I'm gonna leave a good name for the people in my district that I went in and did what they asked me to do. And I don't see that. So anybody want to address the Gateway and the Charity school?
Mr. Kelly?
Yes, uh, we did mention we were on slide 26. This does not include all of our carryover projects. Those are carryforward projects. We've already been working on those. So they will be-
It needs to be in there. It needs to be in there. And my, and that school, 118, East Southwest Side, needs to be moved back up on the list. It needs to be moved up. You just can't offer people money and have meetings and tell people what we're gonna do, and then turn around and just, just downright lie to them. Because that's what we're doing right now. I'm, I'm not pleased with it. I, I really am not pleased. I, I can't leave that. I, I cannot leave like that. So, so I, you already answered that question for me on 27. I'm going on, um, prioritizing in the long range plan Dr. Jenkins mentioned on 28. I'm asking this boy, you guys gotta work on the reprioritizing and putting us back where we were. I don't know why. It's only one or two things. I, I don't know how people could just pick and say, this one go, and nothing came before the board. Nothing came before the board that we could discuss about it. Some of us were willing to give. But I, I, you know what? I'm, I'm very hurt today, very hurt. But I think the completion of the original sale tax on page 28, the 22 relief school, the capital renewal that you talked about, um, throughout the plan, with, with our direction of the board, I am asking that this board be fair to this community. They have waited for years. They have waited for years. And, and now we finally got something. There was something else that came up. Um, let me go back. She, uh, let me see. She mentioned this. I needed to ask. I heard her say 1K8. And let me find out what that is. Because all of us wanted every board member to have a K8 school. And we weren't looking to have two and three. We were all just glad to get one. I came on this board, there were only one K8. Let me see what page that was. That was one of the ladies that reported. I need her to explain that to me. Find my note on that. Did anybody want to answer about the moving of the schools on the list?
Mr. Kelly? I think that's a really important issue to be addressed. There's been a lot of accusations levied about racism. So I think we all need the answers. Mr. Kelly?
All right. Your last question on the K8, that was back on page 23. There's 1K8 in 2022.
On 23, it's up on 27 also. So you want to address 23 and then go over to 27? I found my question.
Yeah, on 23, there was a new K8, 90K8 in 7. That's the 1K8 that you'll see in the-
So how many, how many K8s are in those districts? How many? Because all of us are supposed to have at least one.
There wasn't any in District 7 prior to this one.
Two in mine, but we weren't asking for it because it will take away from my middle school. I'm surrounded by Robbinswood, Carver, Memorial, West Ridge. That's a circle for all of my elementaries. So we're not pushing that. But what, what, so this is, how many, um, so how many, this is one and going in District 7. That was the 2022, 23. I think that one was needed out there on page, on that.
This is the very first one in District 7.
Right. Because they're the only one, we were trying to work on that for the former school board member. Because all of us had a K8. Mine was the OCTS8. Everybody had a K8 and a, and a couple of school members had one or two. Okay, we're not looking for one and two because we want the enrollment in our middle schools to stay high. And they're not where we want it to be. And parents have been calling me about that. So they're, they're very concerned about the future of their community when we have beautiful Memorial, beautiful Carver, beautiful West Ridge. Now, I inherited Robbinswood. I inherited that. I would have torn that down if I was the board member, but I didn't get an opportunity to do that. So we have that. So we do need that. So I just wanted to know what, I thought she mentioned another K8 on page 27.
No, that was the only K8 mentioned, just the one in District 7, which is the first one to be built in that district.
Okay, okay. I wanted to know, I wanted to know about that. Okay? So I, I, other than those changes, as Dr. Jenkins mentioned, board needs to really prioritize this budget, especially our capital budget. And there's some prioritizing needed within the, within the operating budget. But the capital budget, this board stuff, the reprioritizing there, I don't think you need to just put it under the cover and hide it and put it under non-consent and think I'm gonna vote for it. I can't. And even if you vote it down, uh, you know what? That's your, that's your prerogative. That means you're right back into where we got out of. right back into where we got out of, the vestiges. And next thing, our people used to come down and march and bring buses. And I don't think you want to see that. I won't be leading it. But somebody going to get angry about something when you take things away from people that you promised them. We had been taken away. 118 was taken away, and I think, Madam Chair, that was your first year as chairman on the board, and we voted it back in. If I'm not mistaken, I may be wrong. If you want the chair, I know we voted it back in. And now it sits as number 36 for 2025. I'm sorry, nowhere in the world. We are falling right back into the vestiges that we came out of. And I would hate to see us do it. We have a great unitary status. We have great, a great monitoring committee that we have put together, that this board has put together. This board has put together. You may not know all about it. But they are very, very good. They do not get paid. And they work and monitor fairness in our district, which is needed. And in the wake of what is going on, everybody's entitled to what they're entitled to. Because some of the new schools, they overcrowded. I mean, some of the parents have, have, um, been asking, you know, for school. But you don't just take somebody else's school, go open your community. That's racism. That's racism at its highest. And yes, I will accuse us of that. So Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, and Mr. Kelly, I thank you for this report that is not totally correct, and needs to definitely be prioritized. And I, this is my first time not receiving a budget that is balanced. This budget is not balanced. This budget is hidden racism. And I'm not going to be the only Black on this board to sit there and let this happen to the community in which they selected me to be the board. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. And thank you, Mr. Kelly. I hope that you all will go back and take a look at this, bring it to the board, so we can make a difference as a board and reprioritize this.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon.
I'm finished, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I'm going to call on Dr. Jenkins. I think we do need just to clarify a few things about where we are in the process. We are actually not looking at next year's budget. We are in the review process that the board asked for throughout the year so that we could be well informed and educated before we ask the staff to come back with the budget and give input on our priorities along the way. Dr. Jenkins, let me turn to you for some clarification on that. And then I really think it is extremely important that, especially for the newer board members, to understand the concerns and the accusations about school 118. Because I need the peace of mind, we all do, to understand whether that's, how that school got on, got off, has it been moved, is there, what is going on with that. So let me turn to you and give the floor entirely to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of points I have to make. I would not present to this board any plan that is full of hidden racism. That is not the case. I'm deeply troubled by those comments. Mid-Florida Tech, if you will remember, the 136 schools, some years ago, maybe two school boards ago, there were, um, the movement on that list to get all of the schools covered, moved the technical centers to the end of the 136 list. And so these are the last of the 136. Some of them are actually in planning now. Orlando and West Side locations will start construction next year. The other technical college campuses will be in planning and design next year, meaning they would go into construction the following year. That will complete the promise that the community made in that sales tax for the original 136 schools. When it comes to Site 118, that is a relief school that we have been looking for property. If you recall, we ran into a problem with Edgewood on the location of that school and in a certain property, because they had concerns, I believe, around zoning and who would actually be attending the school. We've not given up the notion of a relief school. We are looking at other properties in that site. Your five-year CIP is flexible, can be adjusted if we find property. If we do not find property, that relief school would have to be accommodated through rezoning children in that area instead. The 118, we've not given up on. We have been struggling with property and happy to go back to Edgewood again to see if they would reconsider that property that we believe was prime, a perfect location for the rezoning in that area. I believe the concern was around who might be zoned to actually attend the school. And so we had some resistance and were unable to complete that. Doesn't mean we've given up on it. Your five-year CIP, with your input, with your feedback, is adjusted from year to year. No one has lied to the community. No one has provided for hidden racism in this actual plan. It is a draft, because we need to know where the board would like to see movement. And I would be very happy if we would have reconsideration for that property in Edgewood. If not, we've looked at some other properties that are just not as attractive for sending our children to a school in that location. But we will continue that effort. A fallback plan is that you rezone in an area if you cannot get a suitable location. But we've not given up that search. Your five-year plan is flexible. That's why it says draft. I have to tell you, I will not let anyone believe that there's hidden racism included in this. I'm disturbed at that comment. I don't know why. It might have been, might have been made. I would not present even a draft that is accommodating somehow hidden racism. Have to say that, Madam Chair. I apologize. We will certainly meet with Dr. Gordon, try to help clarify her concerns.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins.
Mad-
Let me take a pause for just a minute, members, because what I have next is not making sense to me on the board. I have Member Gallo. That makes sense. Member Cobert, I have you, but you're in a different seat. So you were next. Then I have Member Byrd listed here, but Member Byrd is calling in. Member Byrd is here?
No, she's there.
Member Byrd, I'm sorry, I did not see you over there. I knew you were planning on joining us. But I also knew that she just got in town at like 3 o'clock in the morning. So, okay, so Member Byrd is really here, and they switched this around. Never mind. All is good. Member Gallo, you're recognized. And if anybody is calling in, Ms. Enville, you'll let me know?
We're good. We're just, I'm waiting for one more.
Oh, you're a member, you're a member Jenkins now. Okay. Member Lopez is Dr. Jenkins. I have it. Thank you, Member Lopez. All right. Member Gallo, an apology.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Some of my questions have been answered by previous school board members. This was a lot of information thrown at us extremely quickly. And I know that a lot of work went into it. So thank you very much. I wanted to know if we could possibly get the notes, especially the numbers. There's been a lot of numbers thrown around. Well, you know, shortages here, shortages here. They weren't in the presentation that we were given. So if someone could give us the breakdown of the numbers so that we know where the shortfalls are, what the estimations above are, that would be really, really helpful. Because it looks like we're literally going to have three days. We're going to have a huge $4 billion budget, and have three days to review it before our first work session, which, okay, I'm sorry. I said, it sounds like that, um, we're only going to have three days. We were told that we're going to get the budget on the 27th, and then our first workshop or, or meeting on it would be on the 30th. So that's not, three days, when you're looking at a $4 billion budget, isn't a lot of time to kind of review. So any numbers we can get upfront, any meetings that we could get one-on-one to help us kind of walk through this, so that I personally feel like I'm prepared for that 30th meeting would be very much appreciated. Yes, please?
Can you respond to that? We can get the, the notes section, I think?
Yes, we can get some numbers. And the, and the one handout you have on the capital, the draft, the draft plan, that, that pretty much has all, at least on that side, all the numbers there. All right?
Okay. So I guess just on the, Madam Chair, sorry.
Absolutely. No, go ahead. Your, your point is well taken. You all ran through a lot of additional detail. Very helpful. But if we could have the notes section, because you provided a lot more background, that was critical. It, we'll either have to watch it or read it.
We'll give you the entire script.
Thank you. That was awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So now I just, I'm going to try to go through these and ask, and not ask duplicative questions. So just bear with me as I, because I was trying to write notes, and I can only write, so. So first, I want to talk about, hang on. So the third, I just want to make sure I have an understanding of, and I think this was already asked, but the $37.4 million, that was just for raises, right? That's our portion that will go to the raises for the teachers that were allocated in the FEFP?
That's the new state allocation strictly for, to push up, its goal is to push up the starting classroom teacher salary to 47.5.
And then you, someone cited 13 million for new teachers. Can you explain that to me? Like I said, I was writing down quickly. So if I wrote down-
Well, maybe the notes will clarify that. I don't recall that number. So, but I apologize if I taken maybe-
Charlie?
Yes, on slide five.
Yes.
We had said 37.4 million is for the teachers.
That's me. If I was completed.
On slide five, we had said that 37.4 million is for the teacher salary increase, and 13 million is used to pay for the growth in students that we are projecting.
Okay. Thank you very much. And so that leads me to my next point. So we're projected a growth of, up to 200,000. That's our projected growth for next year?
Yes, the, the estimated FTE is 209,400. That's a growth of 1,661 over where we were in the fourth calculation, where we are now.
And those were the numbers we provided to the Department of Education?
They are provided in conjunction with what they project for us. It's part of the whole state projection for total number of growth in students.
So was COVID-19 taken into consideration when they did these projections? Or will we be able to-
No, this was done long before COVID came about. These were back in January.
Thank you. So it's very likely that those numbers will be significantly lower than that?
Correct. We're not sure what the impacts exactly will be from COVID-19. But yes, we expect things could be a lot different.
Thank you. And then on page, I wrote notes, and I don't know what they are now. I'll figure that out. So on the PICO dollars, the military, I know that we haven't gotten PICO dollars for the last, I think, couple of years from the state legislature. They've all gone to charters, and they've all gone to higher education. Which, I'm thinking is a good thing, because then we don't have to share our local capital outlay dollars. So I guess my question is, is do we save money locally if we don't receive PICO dollars? It was my understanding, the way that the, it is a very weird formula that nobody understands. But if we would have actually received PICO dollars, and charters would fall under a certain amount, then we would have to give them some locally. And those dollars locally might be more than what we would really get from PICO. Like, it would, it would cost us money, I guess is my question.
It could potentially cost you money based on how the legislature is funding charter capital at this point. But back, if you go back numerous years ago, charter schools were funded independently from the legislature, from, from the dollars, from PICO dollars. They were, this district got their PICO dollars, and they funded charter schools separately. So that's kind of changed over the last number of years with the change in statute.
Can you answer that? And then I had a question about the, um, the, the CARES money. So we received, and I think the governor said, in his press conference on Thursday, that he was going to give, I think, $64 million for summer school to help bridge the gap or that COVID-19 loss that was experienced in the last nine weeks. Do we yet know how much of that we, we will, we anticipate receiving from that 64 million?
The 64 million, that, that 64 million is a statewide grant that, that we have to apply for. There's an initial allocation, and that, those dollars have to be shared with private schools and charters as well, not, and not just our traditional schools. The, the initial estimate was roughly, I think, $5 million. But we have to make sure we have qualifying expenses, expenses for, that qualify for that grant, because there's particulars in that. I don't know all the particulars of that grant at this point, because we're just getting information now. But, but we'll have to see if we can even potentially use all those dollars. Because those, we, we received some of this information, and it really goes back to the beginning of June, which, we didn't even get the information until after the period had already started. So we'll have to see how that will work with our instructional program at present for the summer.
But we do intend on applying for that. I mean, it's like tick-tock, tick-tock.
Yes.
Okay. And so maybe at the next, you'll have, we'll have numbers on how much we will receive, or how much grant dollars we would have gotten for summer school?
Yeah. I think the plan is due June 30th, just the submission of the plan. The dollars won't even get here till next fiscal year, whatever we qualify for, and the state accepts in our application.
So we won't get any of those summer school dollars for the summer school now presently that we're going into?
No, but we could potentially get refunded back for dollars we are currently spending.
Thank you. So then the, the devices, I know that we, can someone share with me how many, how much dollars are the CARE dollars that we identified? I think 46 million is what we're going to get after we give the charter schools and the private schools their dollars. And you had mentioned that we were using a portion of that to bring in all the cohorts. Do you have that dollar amount?
The device dollars, right around $8 million we were using to buy the last of the devices.
And that would, so then every cohort will be online for one-to-one devices in our district?
Yes, there'll be devices for all the students. We still got to do the infrastructure, should they, should we, we have to do that back at the school. But yes, they would have the devices.
So that brings me to my next question. So we have to spend $16 million on infrastructure for our existing one-to-one devices? That's how much money it's going to cost us this coming year?
That's what, yes, that's what's in the, in the budget for that. That's what the plan is, yeah, for infrastructure at all those remaining schools.
It's 23 schools that still need to be up to code. That, are, are those schools that have devices currently?
The, I'm not sure which ones specifically, if it's, if it's 23, I'm not sure. Do you have a number on that? I don't have that. That's really, we'll have to get that from facilities as far as a number on it.
Okay, that's, I was just, I was just curious in my mind. Again, just, yeah, if we can get a breakdown on some of these numbers, it'd be help, helpful for my mind to understand where the money's going. And you had mentioned, I believe, earlier, and so I don't want to repeat it, that you, we don't know as of yet what our reserve budget will be. We know, we're thinking it might be 62 million, but we don't know how much above that yet.
Correct. We, we know we were having to adjust it down based on those previous actions that were taken by the board. We are hoping it, it may rise a little bit. We'll have to see how it closes out. Really, we don't close out officially the year till, really, it's, it's September by the time you make all your adjustments for year end, all your accruals, et cetera, to actually see what your fund balance is for year end.
And then on the food service enterprises, I know that we had outlay a lot of money to make sure that our kids were fed. Did we get, will we get any type of federal reimbursement for that?
There is some reimbursement that's available for the, for that program, that grab-and-go meals. It's not to the extent of the expenditures we are, we are incurring for that program. But yeah, there is some, some reimbursement.
So we'll be able to recoup some of those losses that we-
Well, the loss is really already taken into account, the reimbursement we anticipate. So that's really the net loss we, we expect for the food service operation.
Thank you. That's what you know. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Thank you. Let's go then to Member Cobert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And several of my questions have been answered also. So we won't review. One question, one concern that I have, as, as I was looking at the survey that we did of parents, whether or not they're comfortable sending their students back face-to-face in the fall, we had, if you combine those who are, are, say, definitely face-to-face, those who say face-to-face with proper protocols, and those, I'm uncertain, that's about 82%. So here's my concern. Let's say we have about 20% who decide not to come back to school. That's a potential $328 million loss in FEFP. If we take 20% of our projected 210,000 students, that's 42,000 students. And that's something I think we need to be conscious of. I know we have been working with parents to explore virtual school. If we have 42,000 students exit, and then potentially, some of those could, then a mass influx back in January, if they're comfortable, again, I think flexibility, being nimble and flexible, not only with those dollars, but understanding that we may have those students exit and then come back, I think that's something we really need to be conscious of as we plan for the fall. Secondly, I agree, I believe it was the chair who mentioned operations as a priority. In the past, because I've been working with a committee with Florida School Boards Association, there was a crisis, and I'll have to do some research, where they ask for a temporary allowance from the legislature to use capital dollars for operations. And I think that might be something that we could join in. And as I look on page 27 at some of the capital appropriations, there are some things I think that we could put off. I think protecting those employee salaries and education, educating our children has to be the priority. So district-wide painting, that I think could be put off for a year. School bus replacement, that possibly could be put off for a year. That's almost $22 million right there. So I think if there are some places that we could look for flexibility, whether it's from the governor's office or the legislature, there's a place that we might be able to find some dollars. And I'm working with FSBA on that as well. Good news, if no one heard, in Governor DeSantis's press conference that he, he just completed this afternoon, it looks like those teacher raised dollars are safe, according to the comments that he made when asked by the press. That's good news because we need to protect them now more than ever. And then finally, I'm, I'm very pleased in the, in the use of the dollars for those devices for students to take us back to one-to-one because there is a potential that we may have to flip a switch. Say we all go back to school in the fall as planned and we have one school that has an outbreak. We may have to send a classroom home or a grade or an entire school for a certain amount of time. This will allow our students to continue distance learning for that time, whether it's, like I said, a grade, whether it's a whole school or whether, God forbid, it's the whole district. This will at least allow our students to continue learning remotely. And it gives us again, that ability to be nimble and flexible because the continuity of teaching and learning has to be the number one priority for me. So those are my comments. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Excellent comments. Excellent comments. And, and it's good to know that we're all rowing in the same direction. And I think that flexibility will be important. And I'm glad, and I know that Mr. Kelly has a great deal of history on this. And if anybody knows the rules and what we can do, it's Mr. Kelly. And anybody who can help change them, it would be you and members of the board. So we will do our best together on that. Let me go now to Member Bird. Member Bird, welcome back.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to follow up with what Member Gould's comments about the reserves. And when you, and I guess I have a question really, but when you look at our, our policy DB that says that we have 3% fund balance. And it says that, oh, where, where is it? Hold on just one second. Anyway, it's, it says that obviously that, that unassigned 3% should only be used in the case of fiscal emergency. What, what exactly would constitute a fiscal emergency where we would dip below that 3%? I'm just wondering since, you know, I would, I would think this would constitute, could constitute, maybe not yet, but could possibly constitute a fiscal emergency. So I'm just wondering at what point would we dip below that 3%? Or it would have to come to the board, I know, for a vote to do that. But I'm just wondering at what point would you, would we look at doing that?
Likely would we've, you know, turned over all the stones we can and there's really nothing else, no other place to look. You, you really have to look for reserves, but like the policy says, if we needed to do that, we would bring it back to the board for your concurrence with that.
Okay. I guess that's the only thing I really needed, just a little clarification. All my other questions have been answered. Thank you. And thank you to the staff for the report. It's very good.
Absolutely. Thank you, Member Bird. Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have simple questions. So just, I just want to understand better. In the, in this work session, session about operating and capital budget draft, when we identify the priorities is because there is no question that we're gonna, you know, we're gonna budget that areas, that we're gonna take care of those priorities that we already discussed in previous conversations in school board meetings. Am I right or wrong?
That's correct. We're, we're looking for priorities through, where the superintendent looks for, you know, to get direction from the board as we, and she puts together a balanced budget.
So, and, and are not in, in order, are just, and they identify and?
Yeah, they're not necessarily in a particular order.
Okay. So when, you know, I, I, I need more explanation on the first one, on potential for revenue shortfall?
All right, on the potential for revenue shortfall, it's really based on what we're just seeing from the state level. We're getting reports from the Economic Demographic Group up there that show, like we said, sales tax, state sales tax dropped dramatically in the month of April. So when we see that, we know that sales tax is one of the primary revenue sources for the state. And that helps fund education as well as all other areas of the state budget. We can't help but to think that will ultimately impact the state budget and what comes to education.
Okay. And on, on the second one, on COVID-19 safety measures, is only on safety measures for COVID-19? We're not talking about safety matters in general, like security?
Well, those are all, always have been a priority, the, the other safety. But we were just kind of emphasizing that there's additional cost and priorities to deal with the COVID-19, the safety measures related to that, that will impact this next year's budget.
But it's still in the same aspect?
Yes.
Okay.
Cat Gordon has left the meeting.
Her, her phone is, her phone is dying, both the home phone and her cell phone, so.
Okay, thank you.
But she has queued in to call, so, or to talk, but after, uh, school board member Castro dental, so. We'll let her charge and then you can call her back.
Okay, so remember Castro dental is up next and then Dr. Gordon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So on, on page 12, other budget impacts, what is the family empowerment scholarship?
That's a scholarship that was afforded by the legislature this past year. And like we said, the impact was $10.6 million to the current year budget. Those dollars actually show up in our budget, but they actually, that revenue never comes to it. The state peels that off, very similar to McKay Scholarship. And they're provided to those students to attend private schools.
Is to, so the majority is to go to private school? Is that related to, to, you know, for bullies and all that type of?
You qualify based on your level of income to get that family empowerment scholarship.
So when we are talking about the budget impact is negatively? No.
That's correct.
Exactly. Even CARES Act funding?
CARES Act funding would be a positive. We don't know exactly how it will impact us, but yes, we think that's, that will impact our funding because we are, we know slated to receive certain dollars, that 90% that comes from the elementary, secondary education for K-12, we know that will be coming to us. That's that 55 million, which we have to again, share with private and charter.
And what is the, the budget adjustment? It's so general, I don't understand.
Well, those budget adjustments would be, it's really things that may happen during the year. Like if we have a revenue shortfall and the state comes in and holds, holds back some of our money, even though it's in the first calculation and maybe in the second calculation. But if they have, their collections for revenue are short and they have to make adjustments in the budget, they could potentially give us what they would call a proration of funding. So they take away dollars. So it drops your per student funding and that can be significant.
And on page 16. And when we're talking about the long-term effect of the COVID-19 pandemic, I know that we cannot predict that, but are we going to have a clear impact overview before we approve the, the budget?
I think there'll be additional information coming to, to the board on the whole impact. Here we're talking about specifically, when we talk about long-term impact, we don't know how that's going to really affect education. You know, if, as you look down the road, even two years, five years, what will education look like? Will it continue to be primarily face to face or will it go, go more digital? Some of those things will just, it's just something to consider as you, as you look at future issues affecting education. So that's, we're just trying to point to that because we really don't know the impact of what this pandemic will do to, to public education as we know it now.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time and for the presentation as well to all of you.
All right, thank you. Let me, before I call in, Dr. Castro dental, let me ask for one thing. When we come back to review this budget, I think that the issue of the RLE remains a little confusing to some board members based on comments that I've heard, not just today, but along the way. So while Mr. Kelly, while you and I know that the rate has been declining, I know you're also aware and have tried to explain to the board that the amount has generally been increasing in spite of the decline. So I'm thinking that it might be helpful in the next presentation to possibly show the rate and then maybe overlay the revenue so that the board can see that, yes, we are losing opportunity for revenue, but we are not seeing a declining revenue. Now, that may change this next year, depending upon what happens with property values. But I think that, that clarity, especially for newer board members who are not used to looking at that, that RLE component, might be helpful to us all. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So let me now get us back in order and recognize Dr. Castro dental and then Dr. Gordon. Dr. Castro dental, you recognize?
All right, thank you. I have a question about the functional equity that mentioned on page three of the Long Range Capital Improvement Plan. If you look at the fiscal year 2021, it got $6.7 million. And if you look at the next year, it's got allocated 20 or 60 million dollars. And I just have a question. Why is there such a discrepancy in those two years and then why does it stop?
I'd have to go back and look at maybe the precise details, but more than likely, you're doing planning that first year, so you don't need near the dollars that you do need for construction. But the way they have it, the way it's laid out in the plan, you have that first year of planning the various projects. The second year, you bring in the construction dollars, which is when you need most of the dollars to support the completion of the project. And so once, once you have those dollars budgeted in that second year, based on the plan, there are no future functional equity projects as shown in this current draft plan.
Madam Chair.
Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you. And Dr. Castro dental, if I may clarify, that, that was a set number of schools during years ago, previous board, where they were not provided all of the density for their capital improvement as other schools and as our current specs would indicate. So it is a limited number of schools, I believe they were all middle schools, that were provided a smaller footprint for number of classroom buildings. So it's a set number of schools planning initially and then the actual construction. That's why it's truncated.
Okay, does that, the functional equity, does that derive from the unitary status? Or is it just making sure that all schools of certain height get equal resources?
It, it does not derive from there. It's really driven from the, the size of the school, the prototype size. There were schools that we built and we did not put in enough classroom additions at the time. It was a cost-saving measure that was done years ago. And so those schools were never built to the prototype capacity of, of other light schools like that. So like Superintendent said, most of these are middle schools. And so these are providing additional classroom space to hopefully relieve some of the portables and bring them up to prototype size. And that's contingent upon the enrollment projection showing that they really need that, that space to provide space for those students.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying. I have another question about the decision to reopen. Now that we have a preliminary budget and an indication from the governor of what he will not veto, is there a timeline for decisions on what reopening schools will look like? Is that, will we be getting more information about that at our next board meeting? When do we get, when do we find out some more information now that we have some budgetary numbers?
Madam Chair. Dr. Jenkins.
Dr. Castro dental, you are correct. That would be at the next board meeting. We would update you. As I indicated, we will have a summary of that 140 some odd page document. We will provide to the board a summary, a summary of the document and then a timeline, projection for how we can move forward. We will provide to you at Tuesday's board meeting.
Dr. Castro dental.
Okay, thank you for that. Yes. Thank you for that. That's all I have for today. Everyone else, I'm done with my questions.
So I have Dr. Gordon next, and I think I may have Member Lopez. Are you recognized after that? Okay. Dr. Jenkins has popped up. It's confusing to me. Dr. Gordon?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to go back to page 21. And if I could get the person, the staff member to give, to read the script that she was reading, there was something there that I, I wanted to, to address. And I, and I overlooked it in my conversation. It dealt with the, if she would just, it was very short. She had a very short script for the sales tax appropriation. I am very concerned about that. And, and Madam Chair, I would like to suggest to you, that was a wonderful comment that you suggested to Mr. Kelly about going over the RLE. Okay, the required local effort, how, how important that is. I would also, what we normally do so we will know where we are headed is to get the controller in. And generally that controller comes in and addresses our board and, and works with our staff and speaks to issues to let us know how things are coming in, what they are projecting. And we have not had that yet. So I would like to see that if any way possible when you do the RLE.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon.
So if, I, I need them to read that script on page 21 for me, please.
All right, we'll read that script for you. Because the sales tax revenues are the most affected by the current economic situation, we wanted to present you with the list of projects or initiatives that are currently being proposed to be funded from sales tax in this draft capital plan. As we explained before, the projected decline in sales tax revenues may call for capital needs to be re-prioritized. We have provided you a draft capital improvement plan, but we will need your direction in terms of prioritizing as adjustments may be necessary as we track our sales tax collections versus budgeted revenues this year. These are the initiatives or major capital categories that are being funded through sales tax revenues in this draft plan. First one is the completion of the original 136 schools. This draft allocates the funding needed to complete the list and aligns with the proposed facility's construction and funding request schedule. At this point, the last school in the list would be completed in 2024. Relief schools. This draft includes sales tax funding for the construction of five relief schools. Some are partially funded from sales tax. When we get to the next slide, we'll discuss more in-depth the relief schools, but our draft CIP plan is funding relief schools in the year recommended by the Advanced Planning Committee. Digital curriculum, this is our one-to-one initiatives. The plan includes funding to address infrastructure needs related to the program. With all schools going to one-to-one, this is the last year in the plan in which sales tax funding is allocated for this purpose. for this purpose. Capital renewal. In accordance with the referendum, a portion of the sales tax revenues is transferred to capital renewal fund to cover major system replacement needs. This draft plan continues to fund that transfer. Based on the anticipated projects, we are projecting that capital renewal fund will be exhausted by fiscal year 2029. Functional equity, these are the projects provided primarily intended to add permanent instructional space and replace some portables at schools where the current capacity is less than the district's prototype, and the enrollment projection supports the needs for the additional classrooms. In the pre-2003 sales tax schools, these are schools that never made it to the original sales tax list because of the recent construction work at that time. The list includes 20 schools planned to be paid from sales tax and 10 ancillary facilities that are planned to be funded from property taxes. Our draft CIP shifts 45 million of the funds requested in '22 to '23. This funding shift allows the plan to align, align revenues and expenditures while continuing the, the funding of this initiative through fiscal year '26. And that concludes our comments on slide 21.
Thank you. Dr. Gordon?
And I will, and Madam Chair, thank you. I will make my comment. And let me make this perfectly clear. My intent is not to call anybody a racist, because I hope that you are not. I hope that I'm not. However, if it hits you, I'm sorry to hear that, because that is not my intent. My intent is to deal with what Mr. Kelly just read, in reference to the capital renewal, in reference to the completing of the list of 136 schools, in reference to the relief schools, the functional equity, on page 21. And if it hurts somebody, I don't take ownership for anything unless you have input into it. Well, I didn't have the privilege of having input, because if we did input, there's always imminent domain. And even when the chair was, uh, the mayor of Orange County, there was, there was a time we were begging to just hand down that, that place over Mayor Americana, which is a beautiful lake, and people are living in slums and houses that are burnt out, and we could have done imminent domain. There are a lot of things that we could do. And if this isn't racism at its highest, to move a school from 2020 where that school could have been built, it could have been built, based on the documents that I've been, I've been on this board. I know when we got on the list. I know when we got kicked off the list. So that could have been racism, but I didn't call it that then. I'm not here to hurt anybody's feelings. I'm here to get the budget that's going to make everybody have equality. That's what we are all about. And if something has been taken away from somebody, they should have been told. Was I told? No. Was I told that this school and all of the other schools that we did not get to complete under my, un, un, under my jurisdiction, that have moved to different time zones for whatever reason? We didn't argue about it, but there comes a time when you have to speak up. And of course, being superintendent, you would feel it, because you're in charge. I would hope that you didn't leave the charge. But I hope that when you take this back to the board, that this board would see that fairness is put back into this budget and put back into this budget plan. Because I do not call this fairness. There was a lot of things. I know how we do. I've been here 20 years. Dr., 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 Jenkins, you left. You went on elsewhere. But I've been here since 1958 in this community. And I know what we asked for. I know what we fought for. And I'm damn serious about the other schools. I have not heard anything in this plan. I, we did a wonderful thing. Nobody argued to get Cherry P. moved out of one of the districts. Nobody argued. I didn't have any of those schools in my district. But my predecessors, a lot of people, they didn't want Magnolia, Cherry P., and Gateway. I consider it an honor to work with these students and to offer them the same quality education that everybody else is getting in '22 and '23. They deserve the best. And I fought for that, for them. The community fought for that. And they deserve it. So if you're hurting about it, good. Because these children need to be treated fairly. And they're not, they don't need to keep going down the list. That's how they did us when they gave us the first sale tax. We pretty much was off the list. And not only that, you need to know history. That's what's wrong today. People don't know history. When I came on board, you were closing all of the predominantly black schools. They were closing Orange County, Richmond High, Echo City, Catalina, all down the line, Rock Lake. Mr. Blotter was running around like a chicken with his head cut off if they didn't have 500. The great blue ribbon panel that was a far, didn't combine anything, but worked our staff to death and held us back. I'm here to let you know. If you don't know, you need to ask somebody. I cannot sit here. And if you all don't, if you're hurting, thank you. Because that's the way I see it. That's the way these parents have been feeling and being treated for years. And it's time that it stopped. And I thought when we did unitary status, that we would be fair. And you all are not the board. The other boards, they, they did all they could. They did excellent. The previous boards, way back, over, from back in the 60s and the 50s, put us where we are today. They took all the Eatonville money and got nothing done. That's another case. But I'm not going to sit here and let this board, this is a work session. That's why we do this board. That's why we do this budget. Because in order for her to bring back a, a balanced budget for the July 17 little talk, and we get our little, get our little USB flash drive on the 26th, and have a little meeting or something on the 27th, and do a tentative budget on the 30th, and adopt this budget on September 8th, every school should be treated fairly in this budget. It ain't on prima donna. I'm sorry. Because they overcrowded. We all overcrowded some kind of way. But we just happen to be the lesser. And I can't sit here and allow this to happen. Because I know where we were. I know where we worked, and how we got to where we were. And to see us move, already moved one time, and now we're moved where I'll probably be, uh, uh, knowing me, I'll probably still be alive, knowing me. With my energy, I'll still be alive. Thank God. And he'll, he'll see to it. And if not, I'll be having fun wherever he takes me. But I'm not going to sit here and not voice my opinion. And, and for those who think it's racism, I can't help you. Because that's you. Because I'm going beyond racism. I'm going about these children that I have seen suffer and not, Magnolia should have been finished. You all should have been glad to give us the money that you were going to build, uh, uh, Gateway with, that we were going to build. Gateway was a district four. Magnolia was a district four. Cherry P. was a district, Rick Road District. I won't blame the government. So what I'm trying to tell you, we took it. Nobody argued about it. And now we're going to get them all finished. Yes, there's planning, but the planning goes on and on. Yes, there's completeness, yeah, but it goes on and on. I wrote, I wrote the planning thing, and this board approved it, where parents can have input of how they want it. But I know there are things we can do. I saw the way we did Boone High School. We moved all those people, all of those senior citizens and real chairs, and moved them out of their building to build Boone, and they're now looking to be doing for Boone. But they did imminent domain. Don't let me go down the line on all of the things we did imminent domain to do what we want to do. All I'm asking this board to do. If you don't do anything else, be fair. Be fair. Who got kicked out of that box? Be fair. That is my word to you today. So all I can do is tell you, be careful. You might say that you care, but it shows when you vote. Because I'm here to tell you, you just can't keep pushing people around when we have a unitary status plan and we have a building plan that we said we were going to follow, and I don't know who moved it. So maybe the ones that, I don't know who moved it. No one told me. I got the package yesterday and looked at it, and I still will hope it's devil did we get moved. I'm going. I'm, I'm, you know. And I look forward to it. And I know y'all probably do too. Maybe looking forward for you guys too, the same thing. You do what you have to do for your community and you move on. So I'm here to say I'm not apologizing. Because it's real and it exists, and it's been existing in Orange County Public School for years. And if somebody doesn't stop it, we're going to have the same thing that's going on out there in that world. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Let me call on Vice Chair Gold.
Thank you so much. I, I just wanted to follow up. Um, and as always, it's very difficult to follow, um, Member Gordon, um, because of her passion, but I, I have to say, her passion has been a great mentoring tool to many of us who fight for our communities. Um, I have, as everyone knows, probably the largest growth in, in the county, and we have responded with her support. She's gone out there and looked at our schools and looked at the situation in our schools. Um, but we all want fairness. And I, I just wanted to, to, um, highlight that we're all passionate about our district, but we, at the end of the day, we all want to do what's best for the whole of the county and every child in it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair. I think that is a great note to end on. I, I want to echo that on behalf of the whole board, that we all want all of our children treated fairly. We want them to have an equitable education. We want them to have equitable facilities, and we want them to grow up in a world that lacks the racism that we see around us today. Dr. Jenkins, anything further? All right. Again, staff, it was a lot to cover. I thought you did a phenomenal job. The notes were really, your script, um, explained so much that that is going to be invaluable to us as a learning tool to get from here to the actual vote of the budget. So thank you for also just being so meticulous about drafting it all. Um, that's really helpful as opposed to just rattling it off. Sometimes I don't know how you do it, but it's so helpful to us. So thank you. God bless. Everybody stay safe, and this meeting is adjourned.
Love you guys. Love you all.